Yeah, some we may not use. You don't have to go through this. Do your presentation.
Yeah.
For company on the speakers. I've known many of these people years and years. Several times over. Back out on the road. It's amazing. Trade show business is like, it's kind of like dipping your toe in your cushion. Oh, it isn't something that will be as it goes along.
Six.
To be clear, Dan, once the meeting started, only forms that have been submitted can be speaking correct.
We can take speakers after.
Okay.
Means.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the DeKalb Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this September 18th, 2023. May we start with a roll call?
Becker?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Pena Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
McMahon? Chair Maxwell?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. We'll move to an approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, please let it be known. If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Becker. May I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of September 5th, 2023. Again, any additions or deletions? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Motion by Stoker. May I have a second? Seconded by Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. If anyone has anything that they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward now. If not, we will move to new business. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is a public hearing, a petition by DeKalb County CUSD 428 for a special use permit for a public elementary school at 1240 Normal Road. Could we start with the staff report? Oh, I'm sorry, there's a presentation. I apologize. For those that are presenting, if you would step forward.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Person. I'm the Director of Facility and Safety Operations for DeKalb School District. I have another number of other individuals with us from the school district and from cooperating parties that I would like to also introduce should there be specific questions relating to their department. To my left is Amona Quinet Parker. She's our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Our Mayor Doka, our Director of Business and Finance. Rita Elliott, our Communications Manager. Dr. Minerva Garcia Sanchez, our School Superintendent. Jose Jaquez, our Security Manager, sitting in the back row or in the second row, and also Jeff Lincolnheld from Arc Design, our Civil Engineer.
Welcome all to the.
I'm not sure why I came up to stand, but I came with you.
That's okay. I love the support. All right. So just to go through, the DeKalb School District is looking to for approval on a special use permit as related to what used to be the NIU Nursing Building, which is located at 1240 Normal Road in DeKalb. Prior to it being the nursing building, it was actually owned by DeKalb School District originally when it was built, and that was the Robert School. And in the 1980s, it was sold to NIU. And we are looking, we are in a lease-to-own option with NIU on this property and looking to remodel it entirely as well as add on to the building. So I can go through the different slides for this, and this is a site plan. It's sideways, but the existing building will be as it stands, and then we're looking to add additional square footage. I'm not sure if it's in here.
You called one, Dan?
Oh, there we go. The additional school will be added to the south and the east, as well as there is a parking lot that will remain on the north side, and an additional bus drop-off zone will be in that circle up to the right side of that. South side, all the way at the bottom, is visitor parking and will be also the student drop-off and pickup zone.
Did you want to forward a slide?
Thank you.
Do you have any more to mention on?
Not specific to this, no.
Okay.
Is there something you'd like me to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. We will be circling back. There have been comments that had been brought forth in regards to a number of different topics related to flooding and detention and pond and those type of things. If we'd like, we can pause there if you want to talk about that, Dan. Is that?
No, I think you just present, maybe describe, you know, a number of classrooms, what grades, you know, be in the building, things like that.
Sure, absolutely. This is a K-5 elementary school. It is considered a three-section school, which means that we have three kinders, three firsts, three seconds, third, fourths, and fifths. We also have four additional classrooms available for growth as well as special ed. classrooms that are available. There's also steam classroom and restorative practices classroom. Our gymnasium will be designed with as a storm shelter as required by code, but it will also provide as a storm shelter via under gymnasium so we have a safe place in the event of a storm for up to three hours of coverage during a storm. The building is also designed so the community would be able to utilize the building after school, outside of school hours. There is a way through the corridors to be able to break off the gymnasium area and also have access to the cafeteria and to be able to do that without opening up the entire school. So there'll be a great opportunity in the community to be able to utilize this for the community as well as the school district. This school is also in an area that it has 32% of our elementary students are located within one mile?
North corridor.
In the north corridor are 32% of our elementary students for the entire school district. Right now, those students are being bused to various locations across DeKalb County. We do have schools all the way from Cortland to Malta and as far on earth as Brooks, as far south as Lincoln Elementary. And those eight elementaries, we are at capacity with 20, up to 28 students per classroom. We've added five mobile units throughout the district with approval from this committee. And with the addition of this building, we're able to reduce our class cap to 25 as across the district as well as remove our mobile classrooms at all of our buildings except for Lincoln Elementary. And that's just due to the size of that building. Wouldn't be able to sustain a two-section without that. So that's kind of the background on the elementary school and why we are putting it in this location. It will give a great opportunity for the community members and the families in that community to be able to walk their students to school, participate in after-school programs, be more involved in the school district in ways that they possibly cannot if it was across town or even across the county. So we're looking at this as a definite positive for our families.
Okay, excellent.
Maybe go in or have Jeff describe the site plan more with the traffic flow, bus drop-off, detention, walking path, et cetera.
No worries. Then again, so from north to south, northeast Ridge Drive here, working our way south, Normal Road is on the west side of the slide. First, I guess, thing to hit on is that the existing school building lies in the northwest corner of the property. This existing teacher parking lot would remain as functionally as it is. Our bus drop-off area is proposed to be this circular loop here at the northeast corner of the property. If you remember from the prior slide, there was a large existing parking lot in this location, which is going to be removed. The classroom expansions from the existing building head south from the existing building. There's an outdoor center courtyard area and kind of in the middle of the school, which would access to the playground. We have a soft surface playground for young students, then a hard laptop area for basketball courts, hot scotch or hurdle handing, and then on the far south end, a larger playground for older students, you know, jogging gym and that kind of thing. At the far south end, there's an outdoor learning classroom covered pergola. People can come inside for some teaching experience. Next to that or near that is our loading zone for cafeteria and food supplies, et cetera. The drop-off is, was discussed early on with the city. There are some traffic concerns along Normal Road, so the city suggested that we incorporate a center media here to basically isolate north and southbound traffic, keep everybody in line with where they're supposedly going. We are going to be adding that media here in the middle of Normal Road. There will still be one-lane traffic each direction. We will introduce a left turn lane into the site. And if you're familiar with grade schools these days, they, you know, seem like everybody in the world wants to drop their kid off or pick them up, not necessarily take the bus. So we, in order to accommodate that anticipation, we have a circuitous route through the site where you come in off of Normal and you'll route around through the visitor parking lot, and then we have a dual drop-off lane with sidewalk on both sides where your kids sit right behind you as the driver or sitting opposite you. There will be opportunities to have two drop-off areas for the students and then ever more pickup if that was the case. And then traffic is then directed out as an exit out to Garden Road, and from there they will find their way back to Normal. As far as detention goes, the existing site for the nursing school has no detention under their own. It was built prior to standards. Just basically whatever falls, falls and runs off. Some of the residents had commented that, you know, there's a flooding area in the middle of the site here where the playgrounds are at, and it's 100% accurate. There's a giant hole in the middle of the property right now, which basically collects water that runs off the existing parking lot. And had a rain event, it was some instance of flood, and it was kind of just, it's just kind of sitting in the middle of the site. So what we're going to do to basically come into accordance with the current regulations, we will be basically leaving the existing school building and the northern parking lot as kind of a grandfather condition. The east parking lot that sits now is part of our redevelopment area, and therefore we are required to provide stormwater management for that. The way it works out is that this area here kind of runs off towards Normal Road. This northern wing of the classroom and the bus loop is diverted and maintained in central detention area within the inside of the bus loop. So that's our first area of stormwater management. The playground area in this eastern section of the site drains off towards, toward the east will be picked up in a detention area along here near the east property line, which this area only drains into the south basin. The remainder of the school, the south parking lot, that is all collected into a main detention area down here in the farthest extremities of the site. This is our biggest detention area, probably three-quarters of our total volume is down here in the bottom. All the water from the east property line sheds into our site. We're not releasing any water into the neighbors. Everything up there is higher. It comes down into our site. Like I said, the playground area is a shallow detention that then will drain into the garden. When the larger detention fills or has water in it, it drains up to the exit driveway near Garden Road. There's a major city storm line that comes from Sunflower Drive through the site down to Garden Road. We would, our release brake or our release pipe would be from the bottom detention basin into the city storm service system. So we're in direct connection to the underground storm server. One last note, pedestrian connectivity. Edgewood Drive, we align the north sidewalk of Edgewood Drive to a sidewalk that comes right into the site. It continues along the drop, main drop-off lane. There is a sidewalk on the backside of the site through the bus loop area, some interconnecting sidewalks that are somewhat existent in condition these days. And then there is a sidewalk that heads south to Garden Road. There is also a sidewalk proposed, and I want to say sidewalk is like eight foot wide so that the school district can maintain them with a small little gator, small little thing. So the nine-foot sidewalk proposed to get out to Fox Hollow through an existing form of a park district line. I know that's been brought up by several neighbors currently showing point as an extra pedestrian connection to the neighborhood. That's pretty much the whole shoot and match. Are there any specific questions on the site from the board?
We'll go through the staff report, and at which time we'll take public comments, and then we'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission. Dan, would you like to?
Yeah, staff report in your packet. Thirdly, went through by the applicant. So what's requested is a special use permit. The school site, as mentioned, was annexed, it was annexed in 1973, and then Robert School was built in 1974, the elementary school, which operated until 1987, then was bought by NIU, operated NIU School of Nursing up to this last semester. And the school district mentioned they have a lease-to-purchase agreement with NIU on the site. They plan to open the school in 2025. Tammy went through the grade structure and the use of the building. The site plan was gone through with Jeff. They worked with city staff and some of the engineering and the layout of it. So we have the circle drive for the bus at the north side, an existing parking lot that will be used for faculty. They described the, the building will be up to 70,000 square feet. It's currently 23,000 square feet, so they're adding about 46,000 or so square feet to the existing structure. New parking lot to the south, as mentioned, apparent loading and unloading zone exiting out to Garden Road. That will have a detention areas as proposed. There is a area in the northeast part of the site that does have a stand of trees at the northeast, and the bus unloading area will go into that area. And I understand there'll be, we don't have any final landscaping yet, but most of those trees will be gone with the plan there. So the, as mentioned, the stormwater detention there will have to meet the UDO requirements. There's no waiver, no variance request. It'll have to meet the stormwater standards per the city requirements. And they do have three detention areas that will accommodate the stormwater, and they'll have to, before they can move anything out there, they'll have to provide engineering plans to the city, stormwater calculation, make sure that they meet all our requirements. The path, there is a lot of, sorry, we just have one monitor tonight. We usually have two. One is not working correctly, but southeast part of the site, there is a 20-foot wide area, and fee simple title to the, owned by DeKalb Park District that goes to Fox Hollow through the site. That was put in, in, I think, 2005, when the roughly, oh, that's a 2005 aerial. You see the walkway going in when this subdivision next door was being under construction. And then this is 2013. You can see the little tot lot that was down there in the path, and that was removed in 2014. This is 2015, and the path is removed and the park, there was some issues with vandalism there and criminal activity and the request of the residents, it was removed. The NIU owned it, but the park district had a tot lot down there, but it was removed. And since then, the, I do have a picture of the, that's within the last couple of weeks, the path has been planted by vegetation by the adjoining property owners, maintained by them, and the park district's put up a gate at the west end of the 20-foot wide strip. But the school district is proposing a pedestrian pass through there to accommodate the, any students walking to the school. There is signage on Fox Hollow. It does contain restrictions on parking, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. restricted, Monday through Friday, except residence and legal holidays. So with the special use, as you know, everyone, we do see special use. You have findings of fact, which are in the UDO, and they're in the staff report. So we do take a look at the, make sure the special use complies with the UDO, which meets all of the requirements. There's no variances requested. The, it can't be detrimental to the value of properties in the neighborhood. We believe the special use will not have detrimental effect on adjacent properties. It's owned residential for decades, been school or educational purposes since 1974. All their elementary schools in the area are surrounded by single-family residential areas or multifamily. We take a look at the, make sure it doesn't impact the development in the surrounding area. Much of the surrounding area is already developed, of course, so we don't see any effect on Other standard, take a look at is it adequate utilities and drainage provided, as mentioned by the engineer and be reviewed by our city engineer. They have to provide stormwater detention basins that meet our UDO requirements. There's adequate sanitary sewer. They use an existing water main, I believe that goes to the current school. Advert parking is provided. They do exceed the standards that we require in our UDO for parking. And then finally, we take a look at the, you know, impact on the neighborhood and the public in general. The plan meets our 2022, 2022 comp plan in terms of land use designation. It's institutional and meets many of the goals of the AGN Plan, England North Plan. So we think it will serve the educational needs of the community, and we do recommend approval. We did get several comments from the surrounding neighbors. I'll just go through those or list them. They're provided in your packet. We did get a couple that came in after the agenda was posted on Thursday, and copies were provided to the commission and the school district. And I think we have a few of them tonight that want to speak. We did receive from the Terraces of DeKalb LLC, a letter of support. They own apartment complexes at 808-832-902-914 Ridge Drive and 835 Edgewood Drive. Received correspondence from residents below mentioning that they were not in support of the request. Reasons were varied, stormwater drainage, unsafe bus loading, unloading zone, walkway from Fox Hollow to school site, increase in crime vandalism, unwise use of property taxes, need for the school, reduced diversity in the school's landscaping, true removal and noise. Those letters were from Alan and Lucy Robinson, 675 Teal. I did include a map that shows the, a little hard to see, but it was in your packets too, the name of the residents and where they live. Now, the ones that came out of the agenda, I don't have those up on the map, but Patty Ruback, 1173 Fox Hollow, Dave Hedden or Hedon, I'm sure.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. And Mary Hedon from 1151 Fox Hollow, John and Ursula Sullivan, 1133 Fox Hollow, Jim and Kim Launer, 1145 Fox Hollow. Since the packet was posted on Thursday, we received letters objecting from Kristy and Jamie Crepp, 818 Dorcan Lane, which is a little bit south of the site off this map, but, and then Rebecca Bennet Daylon, 1219 Fox Hollow Court. That's a lot directly next to the stand of trees up there. And copies, again, were provided to the commission. So we have a sample motion prepared. It approves the overall layout plan, which is, was shown, and subject to the conditions in Exhibit B, that's the requirement prior to any site work on there, moving if anything on the property. It's middle of an engineering plan, meeting our UDO requirements, including stormwater drainage calculations, lighting plan per the UDO requirements, a submit of the landscape and preservation plan, meeting our UDO requirements. So we have, Gil, our city engineers here. I also have Commander Steve Leckis of the police departments here. If there's any public safety questions. So with the, the commission, the findings of fact are kind of what we should focus on in terms of recommendation. And we're not really looking at, you know, the school's district decision to locate here or some of their background or financing. I know they have people here from staff that can address any question that may come up, but the focus for the commission should be on those special use findings. And if you feel need to change your motion or modify anything, you can make, add conditions, you can suggest a change in the plan. That's under your preview for that, so.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We have several people that would like to, please have a seat. We have several people that would like to speak to this issue. I will read these in the order in which they were received. Ursula Sullivan, please come forward. And for anyone that's speaking tonight, if you would be so kind as to just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Ursula Sullivan. I live at 1133 Fox Hollow. Let's see, we've lived there for 13 years. Moved here when I got a job with NIU. Is that enough? Identification?
Oh, yeah. More than enough, thank you.
All right. So I sent in the letter, so you've seen the comments for most of you. The main issue we had of concern was with regard to the flooding because it's happened many, many times, and I understand that there's, I've got to be honest, when I saw detention area, I thought that's where the kids were going to go when they didn't behave well. But I understand it's now retention on. I guess those words are interchangeable, right? So one thing, the main concern we have is flooding because we have seen it many, many times. So I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Jeff.
Jeff. Mentioned that there's a few areas that are going to, I can speak very loud. I teach class 300. So, you know, these are the detention areas here, right? And I live, we live right here. This is our little quarter. So right at the end of where all that water's going to go. So one of the big concerns that I have still is that not just is it going to be, it looks like it's going to be made to go there even more, especially off of the drainage from the parking lot and all this other area, which means that there's probably going to be standing water in there, which also means that it could lead to mosquitoes and, and of course, the kids aren't there during the summer because they're off, but we're there and that's our backyard. So now I'm even more concerned than before with the flooding because now we're seeing there's going to be a potential for a lot more, you know, health issues with regard to retaining that much water. And even if you do make it go, and you said you wanted to drain it out that way, do you ever, does anybody ever go by there? Because all of those drains are always full. And I know you've got to get to what you can do, but it gets, the leaves, there's old growth trees all through there, so the amount of leaves that pile up, and they almost are never cleared out. Sometimes John and I, we're on a walk, we'll go, we'll poke it with some sticks and try and get it to go along that way, but it's really, really, really problematic. So that's the main one that we had of concern. The second issue that we had was with regard to the privacy that we're no longer going to have here. It's been very quiet, although I will tell you, every now and then, there's someone that just sleeps there, and so we have to call the police and NIU police, and somebody else might come, and they'll, they'll, you know, kindly leave, tell them to go somewhere else. But with even more possibilities of loitering that will occur because now people can actually go there more often and there's, there's space in there. I'd actually Bill Nicklaus back there. Bill was part was at NIU when that whole situation happened, weren't you? When we, there were so many, so many instances of crime going on and other problems happening when there was a playground there. And when NIU realized that this is our land, we don't have to have a playground on it. We don't have the liability, the insurance liability associated with that, they took it out. And so putting in And so putting in additional places where there can be more people hanging out at night, I was very concerned that y'all want to have a building there that's going to encourage people to come at night even more so. So that, to me, is problematic as well. And then the last one had to do with the referendum, that there isn't one. So my understanding is that's a fact that we're not going to address here, because that's more of a school board issue. But that was the other concern I had was with regard to the fact that this is, even though legally, the school district does not require a referendum, because they're simply adding on to an existing building, and it's leased to own purchase, leased to own purchase, it's legal, but just like I tell my students, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. And in this case, that's what I really, really truly believe, just because you can do that doesn't mean you should actually do that. How many other elementary schools that border houses, as was mentioned before, that there's, that exists, are, is at least 70,000 square feet plus parking? I don't know if anyone has that answer. So that's, that's a lot, that's a huge footprint, right? That's bigger than some of the other schools that we have, maybe not DHS, but definitely the other elementary schools. So that's going to be a big issue. Why is there busing of 32, that's not for y'all, that's for the, busing of 32% of the children, if, if 32% of the children live in the area? And then just the safety issues, I believe one of my other neighbors submitted, just in the last 30 days, 60 reports, crime reports in that area. Do you really want to have an elementary school there? So those, if you really want to approve the building of an elementary school in a high crime rate area, that's a question I put to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ursula. To that point, as far as the water is concerned, Zach, would you like to address that, please?
I would, yes. The flooding will actually be mitigated by what's being done here greatly. When we talk about stormwater management, we've got three things, capture, control, convey. Right now, you've got maybe half of the first one. You've got what's there now that was built with no thought, no standards to what was going on there, and it's running to just what it can find via gravity in the lowest spot, okay? So you're not controlling where it's going. Number two, you're not conveying it anywhere. That's a hole in the ground that it's sitting in. So now, when this is engineered, you'll have all three of those. It will be captured through curbing, through stormwater inlet, through everything you need throughout the site. Then it will be controlled, it'll be taken to these detention areas, okay? And then the most important part is now it will be conveyed. There's a 24-inch city storm sewer, about eight feet in the ground, maybe between five to eight feet in the ground, underneath the middle of that entire lot. So that's a great advantage to this site, because now you have someplace to put that that does not require other overland routes to get anywhere to go through the site. It can immediately go into a city storm facility. The other great part about that is the depth. The, the effect you talk about is when, in a lot of DeKalb, we're challenged, right, with the vertical, real flat out here, right? So now you're saying, yeah, you got this pond, the water's got to go 400 feet that way, and it's only got this far to drop. It's going to sit there, it's going to get swampy. In this case, because what you are conveying to is five feet in the ground, we can put the perfect slope that we want on the bottom of that detention pond and the water, it will have to sit there, you know, overnight or however, depending on the size of the storm, right? But it fills up, it'll go down at a controlled rate, but because we have that slope, every drop of water can run out of there in a controlled fashion. So honestly, it's, it's a better case scenario than, than I've seen a lot of situations. So I'm confident, and they will be required to adhere to all the standards that my office applies to everyone that wants to build in DeKalb, but I'm, I'm hopeful about the drainage situation.
Will y'all hold that true, if you do have plenty in our basement? Yeah.
It will be designed not to do that.
But what if it does? Yeah. We've had some really major rain events.
Right. So every, every one of those detention ponds also has what's called an emergency spillway. And that's a weir that's set at a certain level, that when the pond reaches its 100% capacity, there is a controlled, purposefully directed overflow route, and that would go somewhere out actually into a street inside the existing curves and run down. Obviously, there's water all, you've seen at the big events, it, it pools up around the curves, right? So that's, would be a worst-case scenario, but there's plenty of ground here. Again, these storms are designed for, it's, it's all understood and programmed out, and they will build to the standard that they need to, to alleviate any of that concern. The ordinance does state that beyond our regular rate, we have, I'm not going to get too mathy on you, but we have a rate at which they can release. And that sizes the pond, right? We say you can only let this much water go out this fast. So obviously, you can do the math, right, and you, you build your bowl. Now, there is another line in that ordinance that says unless the existing system cannot handle it. So i.e., if we need to make that pond bigger, maybe bigger than they wanted to pay for, it's, it needs to be built that our system can handle it and safely convey the water, that's the important part, convey the water away from your properties and homes.
So will they be able to build more, so would they be able to slope more away from our houses?
Correct. So there's what we call bounce. And bounce is the amount of the grass you should always see from when the water is at the highest level it's ever going to get, up to the rim of that pond, right? So it's, it's empty when all the water runs out, but this may end up being, some of me see they're only two feet deep. You've probably driven by different, you know, housing subdivisions, things like that, and you see that. Given, again, that that pipe is so deep in the ground currently, that's a great benefit to this community to have, because you can make that pond as deep as you need to hold that proper volume of water. We're not constricted by, oh my goodness, we've only got two feet of cover here, where do we put this size of pond? We can always grow it vertically as well as the horizontal footprint.
Can I, I'm sorry, quick question. That, which may help for the folks that are concerned about it. When you look at water, you know, retention or detention, you're looking at water flow based on rainfall accumulation, what, what standard are you using?
Currently, we use what's called Bulletin 70. We probably should be using Bulletin 71, but this is historical rain data that's captured, not only the amount over a certain period, also the intensity, right? We've all had rainstorms that just rained like this for eight hours. We've also had the, hey, it's been 45 minutes, it's, you know, coming down like crazy. All those storms are mapped out, because clearly those have different impacts on a pipe, right? You try to put a bunch of water down it right away, you're not going to get too far. That pond is sized for that more intense event. So we're not just looking at, hey, here's my bucket, it's always going to come out at the same rate. We say, what if someone tips that whole bucket over right now? Can this pond then hold that? Because the sewer system can only, you know, take so much at a time. So yes, though, that is nationwide, state-specific, region-specific data of, of rainfalls collected over a century that, that we use, and then we map for a worst-case scenario.
Thank you, Zach. And if I could remind you as well, this will be submitted again with the, the, what's the word I'm looking for, grade adjustments to it, so that we will have this discussion again once the whole plan has been presented to the council, correct?
Well, this is a site plan that will go after the recommendation to the council, but before they can move any dirt out there or do anything, they'll have to submit engineering plans to the city engineer with stormwater calculations, making sure that meets the UDO requirements, which our standards are pretty rigorous, consistent with what the county dictates and some of their other communities, so.
And we'll see that again.
And they're built to, you know, per the standards, as we've seen in large industrial areas, so, which has a lot more pavement, and, and those are holding up and, and are working, so.
I hope that, to the security issue, Steve, would you like to address that in any way, or?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a pretty broad question as far as, is there a specific question? If I can do, I'd be happy to answer, but I think just.
Does that, does that really fall within our purview? I mean.
Yeah, probably not in this discussion.
I don't, I think one of the things for us to remember is, while we all, I'm sure, have very strong feelings about whether it's just for this to occur or not just, this doesn't fall within the purview of this commission.
No, no, it doesn't.
I mean, we're, we're, we're supposed to be looking exclusively at, does it?
Highest investors.
Yeah. And so I don't, I don't know that that really.
Yeah, that's probably a city council question. I, I just don't want to make sure that, I, I don't want anybody to feel that we're dismissing it in any way, but yeah, he's absolutely correct. I mean, our purview is only under the zoning aspect of this.
Yeah, any question from the public, we'll try and address.
Sure.
But once we get the recommendation, we'll kind of focus on what the commission should be looking at.
And I would also believe for a school, just personally, I would believe for a school that's being used as frequently, the security standards for what that building will have will be tremendous compared to what it's being used for now.
There's extra security there now. Well, NIU provided extra security because of all the issues that were there. Once they moved out, they, they decked off, but there was some extra security that they had at the corners all the time.
Okay.
And maybe the school district wants to respond, or?
Who controls it? Neither of you or DeKalb?
Currently? We, we, we are in that area all the time, sir.
Who's in, who's in charge?
Of the school district? We are, it's if it's.
No, 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 of that property, it's the leasehold. Who's, who's in charge? Who do we call?
DeKalb Police will be in charge of that.
So what happened?
Can we have the speakers come up?
If you, if you'd like to speak, please come forward, and just again, please state your name and your, and your address if you'd like to speak.
Should we, should we address people written in first?
Yeah, we should. Point taken. If you'll bear with me for a moment, next speaker is Jamie Krupp.
Jamie Krupp, I live at 818 Dorkin Lane. I was born and raised in DeKalb. I was actually in fifth grade at Jefferson School when Roberts Elementary closed. And at that time, that school, Roberts, might have had 60 students. I doubt that it ever had more than 100. So, you know, when it said, well, this property used to be an elementary school, that's a comparing apples to oranges. It sounds like three sections, K through five, this school's going to have 350, maybe 400 students. Back then, when this was an elementary school before, we didn't have DeKalb High School nearby, so we're going to have traffic converging from three schools, Jefferson, the, the new elementary school, and DeKalb High School. So what, that's, one of my biggest concerns is, is the traffic in the area. I understand there are overcrowding issues, but there are plenty, there's plenty of space at Jefferson and at Brooks Elementary to expand. I don't think it's necessary to plop a new school right here, let, you know, about a mile from an existing school. As far as the stormwater issue is concerned, as a real estate attorney, I've seen many instances of, of promises made, we'll follow the standards. Those standards are not a guarantee, they're, they're, they're minimum standards that have to be, be followed. There are no guarantee that there will not be flooding, and I, I think the homeowners in that area will be left holding the bag if, if there is. There will probably be no recourse for that situation if it does not go as planned, and, and a lot of times, it doesn't go as planned with, with stormwater retention.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. Lastly, we have Alvin Brady.
My name is Alvin Brady. I live at 1102 Normal Road. I haven't heard anyone else from my Normal Road get up and say anything about any of the issues that will be involved in this. I'm not against progress, I'm not against quote-unquote building, I mean, adding on to the elementary school from the nursing school. My concern is that we already have children, like in my yard, basically all the time, from dropping off the bus, picking up the bus, and the sidewalk issue and the traffic on Normal and Kimberly, in that area in there, that's where I stay at. And I stay like at the bottom of the proposed site, and I'm always out there on the corners unstopping the drain, because the, the road always floods right there when you go down that hill. Anybody who stays in the area know what I'm talking about. And I'm the, I'm the unstopp, I'm the plumber, I'm the street plumber, because if I don't want to stop the road, there are people that, the water just goes everywhere. So I'm not against progress, because you've got to put a school somewhere, and the children are our future. And I know nobody wants a school in they, in their neighborhood, quote-unquote. They say they do, but they really don't. So we're, I'm not against progress, that's not, that's not mistaking it. But I just want clarifications on some things as far as, I think the sidewalks should be widened if we decide to put a school there, because I know they're going to be parking right there by my house, because they already do. They park right there on Kimberly on the side of my house, and they walk through my yard sometime. I don't say anything, because it's, it's normal to me now. So I think the sidewalks should be wider, and I also think they should think about, I don't know if the city would do it or not, putting some speed bumps there, because sometimes people fly through there. So those are some of my concerns. You know, I'm 250 feet from this site. I'm closer than anybody here. So I'm like right there, I can, I'm going to be able to see, he was saying something about, could you put that one room up there? I'm in 1102. I'm at the southwest end of the, my house is right there at the edge. This is my house right here.
If we can see your house.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. But I'm right there at the edge, so I would just, I'm also concerned about this, that line here, what would be, whether it would be secure, keeping things from getting on my property. So that's some of my concerns that, you know, that I'm thinking about in this. And we already had, I've, I've been broken in before. You know, I put extra security up myself, because I was broken in one time already, you know? So, I mean, it's not a bad area, right? Would you all agree to stay over there? It's not a bad area, but it's got to be more secure. We're going to, especially if we're going to add a, a elementary school to the area, because we've got to think about the children and their safety as well, okay?
Thank you, Alvin. Could you step forward, please? Yeah, that was the last speaker request for him, so if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to, but again, please step forward to the microphone and, and state your name and address.
My name is Charlotte Brady, and I live at 1102 Normal Road. And I'm concerned about the parking lot, because when they build the parking lot, it's going to be right there in back of where my house is located at. And that's going to be a problem, because there, it's going to have to be a little wider, it's going to be a lot of traffic when things go on, like when they have meetings and all that kind of stuff. And they're going to have to need a little bit more than the 200 feet that they need. So that's a concern for me. And, I mean, I don't have a problem with the children, but it's just the, the prob, it's just going to be a lot of traffic.
Understood. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to us? Again, if you'd like to, please come forward. If not, I will close, close the public hearing.
I, we had, I just thought about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How did I miss you? So I'm happy to speak.
I'm sorry, your name is?
My name is Steve David Hedon. My wife, Mary Janusa Hedon, and I, actually he, mentioned us when we were talking about the letters. We live at 1151 Fox Hollow, and I, like Ursula, can speak up. And we're the ranch reverend's house with the solar panels on top. And if I could make a motion, I know I can't make a motion, I would actually like this to be split into two conversations. One is about the NIU property, where we've known since last spring that this was coming, and the school district gave a very, very detailed plan of what they wanted to do about a month ago, when we received the letter. And in addition, then, there's the park district little slot, where we found out about that literally within nine or 10 days, and didn't know it was official until we saw the updated agenda on Saturday. So in some sense, there, there are two different pieces of property that you're talking about. So on the big NIU one, Ursula talked about the flooding, the flooding of Hollow. Hopefully, everything that was stated before works. I'd like to make just a few suggestions. One is that if you're building this building, have you considered making it a two-story building and moving everything closer to Normal Road? Getting this grassy play area out of the wet spot near the retention, detention area. I went to school, Gray School in Wisconsin, we had a three-story building, and I think the kids in DeKalb are just as competent and smart as kids in Wisconsin. Actually, I think we're smarter than kids in Wisconsin. So if you move the whole thing here, then some of the water problems will be maybe helpful along that way, if you just move everything that way. Also, up here in this corner, you've taken this really nice row of trees and replaced it with this large bus turnaround. Again, it with this large bus turnaround. Again, I have technical background, but I'm not a civil engineer. I would think that would add to the water problem. I don't really know. You've also asked for us residents to comment on landscaping. And a few of us said, keep those trees. Don't get rid of those trees. And then the updated part, all the trees are gone. And I almost feel like quoting lyrics from a Joni Mitchell song, because we somehow have a good parking lot right here. And so if you can think about designing this, so you don't remove the trees up there, that would be nice. Then getting to this strip of land that was opened up, I really don't think that one should consider that until the school district does some homework. I think the first question that has to be asked is to look at the people, the homes that are living around here on Fox Hall, Hill Court, and Dayfield, and ask, how many of those homes will, in two, three, four, five years, have a child who's walking to school? If you think about it, backyards of these homes up here go right onto Ridge. The person living in this house is not going to walk down to this pathway, and they're just going to walk up on Ridge. Again, you go down here, they're going to go along Hill Cross and walk up garden to get to the school. I think that the number will end up being small, if you do your homework. Most of the homes in this neighborhood, the people who live in them, their children are in middle school, high school, college. They're grown up with their own children. I know, I don't know all the families there. Actually, Patty probably knows many more people than I do. I know of one family that has a toddler, maybe it's one year old. And I don't know if that family plans on sending their child to this school, to Jefferson, or to a private school. I think if you actually got off the number of kids that are in this area, they would be getting out of their parents' home, walking through this resort path, over the retention ponds. I mean, literally, you have the retention ponds and all the sloping, but you have this walkway over these retention ponds. I'm not quite sure how you handle that. It might be two kids per year. It might be one. It might be zero. So ask that question first. And while you're doing that, you may want to ask a question for the people that live in this area. Do we want that walkway open? After all, we're the people that might be using it. If we overwhelmingly say yes, build that walkway. But if we overwhelmingly say no, then basically you're saying, well, we don't really care what the residents feel. We don't really want input from them. Because it belongs to the Park District, we're just going to do what we're going to do, even if it makes no sense. What we actually think is going to happen is that the families that don't want to wait in line at the pickup and drop-off point here, and don't want to wait in line, pick up and drop off here, are going to drive their cars and actually sit in front of our homes, dropping their kids off in the morning, and then sit there in the afternoon. But they're not from here. They're from other places in the city. I don't know if they're, you guys have been doing good answering questions, so I'll stop there.
Thank you. Would anybody from the school district like to address the rationale for opening that path?
We have to do it.
Sure. Thank you.
I just want to make note, we were not aware of that path until after the original packet was provided to the city. Because it is all closed and overgrown, we were not even aware it was an option. So when the Park District did ask the question about it, that's where we started exploring that as an option. I think it is a good point that you make about seeing how many students are in that area. That is not, this path is something that we just came up as a discussion point within the district, and knew we needed to bring it forth to the planning and zoning in the event. It is something we would like to continue to discuss. Also, it's owned by the Park District, so there are some discussions that have to take place with the Park District, because it is not owned by the school district. In regards to if it'll serve those needs, that's what we can take a look at at that point, to see if it would serve the needs of how many students we have. Because one of the concerns is if we do have a population of students in that area, either now or in the future, when, I'm going to step away from the mic. We have a larger aerial, you can pull up, Dan. This...
Wait. That's way big.
So the path is here. And if there are children in any of the homes here, they will either have to come down here and over and up garden through the sidewalk, or potentially take a shortcut which is heading through a neighborhood that doesn't have a fence. So to get to Ridge and then over and over to the school. So we do have this at Jefferson Elementary, at two access points at Jefferson Elementary. One is off of Ridge, one off of Tall Meadow. Tall Meadow is the newer subdivision, Heatherstone subdivision, that was opened, and the path was put in at that point to gain access to the school. So again, it is something we're still investigating. It isn't a definitive that we are going to be doing it. We can definitely take a look at those numbers before we make any final recommendations. And again, considerations with the Park District have to be considered.
Thank you.
So our kids actually went to Jefferson, so we're aware of that path. But when Jefferson opens up on the ridge, it opens up also onto many, many, many other streets. And if you go onto Fox Hall, it actually says, this isn't a through street, which is a lie, because you can go around Dayfield and then up the ridge. But it's a little cul-de-sac. And so going through that path, again, it's only a limited number of homes. And just because the way the streets are laid out, that we're not connecting the Crescent Court, or the Sleepy Hollow, or anything like that. You have to go up to Ridge to get down to Sleepy Hollow. So a little bit is the geography, you know, of course. And also, as a person who's designed a lot of things, though never been elementary school, I just find that the walkway that's going through the place where all the water is, in between your two five feet or deeper retention, detention ponds, you can't have kids, one, first graders or second graders, going down that path without some type of safety rails, you know, fences or what have you. I would think that there's an issue. I also don't think that putting that isthmus, which is a path to a pathway, or retaining ponds, is optimal for draining those retaining ponds. And so I think it makes your job easier if you don't have that little isthmus or bridge or retaining pond. But just something for you guys to think about here. And hopefully, you're constructive with some of these ideas.
Thank you, Devin. Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it to comments and questions by the commission.
I have a little question about the traffic.
If you'd like to step forward, please.
As everyone was talking, I was like, oh my gosh, the traffic.
Yeah. If anybody's ever been on Ridge, when Jefferson is getting in or out, it's a nightmare. I mean, the cars are parked on both sides. And I, this year, I did notice that they put do not park signs, do not park in front of those homes. I don't know who did that, because it kind of looks like homemade signs. They don't even look real. But I think the residents there probably just gave up, and said they'll just do it themselves. So the, when you're looking at, let me go back. So we live here, as I mentioned before. And if that really is opened up, the people are definitely congregating here, even though it says no parking, except for residents and, you know, holidays. But then also, the traffic going on Ridge, as it is just over here, not even a mile away, you've got the traffic from Jefferson. And that's pretty, pretty, quite a bit, if you ever do go by there. But now, just less than half a mile, just than a mile away, you can have the same situation with the school, a public school, seventy thousand square foot school, that's going to also be three hundred fifty, four hundred students and all, and like was mentioned, nobody really wants to use a bus anymore. They're going to be driving and dropping off a lot more. So that's going to encourage a lot more of that traffic. And I don't know if that's part of the plan, as far as how you deal with the traffic or not.
Also, the way you watch the block anymore.
Yeah.
We have each other.
She and I, Dave and I walk all the time together.
Thank you. Again, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from the commission.
So many. Most of them aren't pertinent to us, though. I do have concerns about the traffic. Especially since Normal is closed at the university now, and will be, how effectively you can funnel the people through, around, up, south, and out. I've seen issues at times at Tyler, where the student population, and you've got teachers all hands on deck trying to get the traffic pattern. So as if and as this moves forward, I'd like to hear more about that can, how that can be solved. Secondly, I think the pathway is a terrible idea, especially when you're going past a detention pond. Water attracts kids. And so I would strongly suggest, as you're looking at it, that be considered to be removed. I have a question that I, I want to ask, and it's not completely pertinent to us, but it does make sense. Part of the reason for building this, it was stated, is to improve diversity. And I'm curious how that would actually improve diversity, when we're pulling students directly from the area, which would seem to have an adverse effect on being a more diverse population. Again, it's not really germane to what we're discussing tonight, but I think it's germane to everybody who's sitting in the audience.
Well, if it is, if you look at number five, it is. And that's my concern, too, is who is going to be benefiting from this? The way that this reads, is it going to be benefiting the citizens or the community? What community are we talking about? And how is it going to benefit everybody? So that is a huge concern of mine, as is the traffic. And I believe that it is going to cause a detrimental value to the homes around this school, this seventy thousand square foot home. I mean, that's a lot of real estate right there. I, again, this may not go to us, but I do believe there's other alternatives. There's all that high school property we have out there. We can add on to Jefferson. We can add on to Brooks. They have a lot of property out there, too. I just feel I have to get it out.
Which I guess would beg the question, has that been considered as an alternative? I mean, I see...
Well, they have to go to Redland though, yeah.
Yeah. I see the huge student population in the classrooms. And I'm curious if those things had been considered, and if they had.
And the reason I bring up that DeKalb High School, first of all, I have a child over there, and my child drives that route every day. And it's going to be very dangerous between Jefferson, Ridge, Normal, Dresser. It's a mess. It is a total disaster. I fear for his life every day when he's crossing, when he's driving now, because he's driving. He almost got hit the other day. We have so much property at the high school, and it's plenty of growth. They're all going to end up there anyway. All those kids are going to end up there one day. So why can't we just build now, over there? Those are my questions. As a servant to our community, those are my questions.
Well, I appreciate that. But can I also say, though, I mean, I think there's a logical reason that you don't build an elementary school next to a high school. I mean...
It wouldn't be right next to it. Yeah, we have tons of property over there. The school are the opposite.
Yeah, no, I understand. And are there alternative locations? Possibly, yes. But I, to me, that is not one of them. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Dan, did you have a comment?
The school district can respond to this, if they wish to.
In regards to just some of the points that you brought up, we actually don't have any additional land at the high school. We are utilizing every acre that we do have at the high school for athletic fields, and then the buildings that stand. The property that's surrounding the high school is not owned by the school district. So we don't have anywhere to build on at the high school for that size of an expansion that would be needed. We did consider many options. This was not just Pickett, and this was the one we went with. We looked at additions on buildings. We looked at different locations. We vetted a lot of different options before we settled on this as our recommendation to our Board of Education. When we're looking at adding on, you mentioned adding on to Jefferson. We already have issues at Jefferson, as has been discussed in regards to traffic. And adding more population of students just, again, adds more traffic concerns there, as well as the fact that we would not be able to gain a three-section school with an addition at any of our buildings. There isn't enough space to be able to manage that from a traffic flow as well as your square footage. So, and there is data in regards to, most of our buildings are two sections. We have one that's a three-section, and two that are four sections. By adding three sections, up to three sections, that can also be very challenging in regards to managing that large of an elementary within one confined space.
Would this be the third largest student population in the district, then?
This would be, let me think here.
Behind Founders and Cortland?
It would be comparable to Cortland. Founders is our largest elementary school. And then Cortland and this school will be comparable in size.
If I may ask, was this, obviously, we've known that there's need, and I think everybody acknowledges that. Was this considered before Cheeseborough was leased?
Oh, yes. There are many factors regarding Cheeseborough, which are why we didn't look to reopen that as an elementary school, one being location. It's landlocked. We can't even put a two-section school into that location. And it's in such close proximity to our other elementary schools, and with Lincoln, Tyler, Founders, as well as the fact that it doesn't have the opportunity for three, to even open a two-section there. Not even space for a playground, because it's landlocked by the Park District land to the east, and the neighborhoods to the west. So that's why that was not considered as an option to reopen.
Did you have...
Yes.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to speak to the question that, it's a narrative, that the decision to put this school in the district in that area was for diversity reasons. It was first and foremost because of there are over thirteen hundred students ages kindergarten through fifth grade that needed a school in that community. We did not think that this was a possibility, going all the way back to conversations that started in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. I think we need to use the word equity and not the word diversity, because diversity includes that there are many different types of students. We are putting a elementary where it's needed because of number of students in that community. Now, if we have to have that question, we have to have a bigger question about the diversity of DeKalb, of the city of DeKalb. If there was land available in, let's say, the subdivision that I have a home in, it would not be as diverse, because the majority of the people in the subdivision that I live in are white. So people would say, well, it's not a very diverse elementary school. But it would be a neighborhood elementary school, but simply because our city is segregated. There will be times when we have neighborhood schools, such as Little John. Little John, if you look at what Little John looked like fifteen years ago, versus what Little John has looked like since like two thousand and seven, it's a different population of students that attend Little John, but that's because of the people on the homes around Little John. Little John is a neighborhood school. And if you look at all the research in the world, will tell you that neighborhood schools are the most impactful and the most effective for student achievement and for family engagement. If you go to any Little John after-school events, or any of our after-school events at schools such as Lincoln, they're walkable schools. Parents are involved. Parents are able to get there. And if you look at the same schools, not that it's a difference in the, you know, the quality of the programming offered, but Malta is not a walkable school. So you have less family and community engagement. It's just, just proximity. People come to where they can get to.
No, I appreciate that. And just based on the students that you had mentioned within that area, I can't think of another, as much as I understand people would like to think of other options, I can't think of another place that NIU doesn't own that would be suitable anywhere in that area. And, you know, once upon a time, we obviously believe that there should be a school there, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The theater used to be...
I...
It's not a...
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, again, I'm sure there are other suggestions, but we're just addressing this particular location at the moment.
No, I just, I agree with your point. I think it's important, especially if kids can be in school in five minutes versus having to travel twenty, twenty-five minutes on a bus. And it's already an early day, especially for elementary school kids. So, okay. I was just curious, because you look at the demographics and you go, well, really, it's impacting minority kids, mostly. And, you know, so, and again, it's not germane to our decision, but...
It's a board.
It is.
It is.
So, thank you.
Well, and I also, to reiterate your point, too, I'm a firm believer in neighborhood schools. And the ability for parents to walk to them, I think you're going to get more participation from student body, best student parents. So, yeah, to me, that's, I'm in total agreement on that one.
I disagree. Not, again, I have a high school kid. Nobody goes to those things. I shouldn't say nobody. Some people do go. Not very many, though.
But that's, that was a learning school. That's developmentally, that's the development. If you look at the trend and the field of education, right around seventh grade, parent participate- education, right around seventh grade, parent participation drops, because, I mean, in essence, it's child development. You want your children to have more autonomy. So parents are less involved starting around seventh grade.
Not this parent.
But, and not this parent either, I have a 24-year-old, and if he has something, I'm still going to support, right? But that's very, very possible at the high school level. But for kindergarten through fifth grade, during those formable years and that developmental time, parents do, parents want to be there, sometimes it just cannot be.
I don't know if this can be answered. How big is, like, property, like, is it like acres, like, three acres you're working with on every day?
The total site's nine acres.
Nine acres. Thank you.
You know, regarding the pathway, I am in agreement with David in that I don't see it as being a huge benefit. And again, if, you know, whatever, however we develop this, if a bridge needs to be created, you have water attracts kids, I don't see it being a big enough advantage to reopen it, to give access to children that could walk a half a block, you know, or to, you know, a block around. And I think that that's just one more place that would have to be monitored in the morning for parent, for teachers. So I don't see that as being a great idea. I mean, when that influx of kids comes in in the morning, you want to make sure that you herd them like cats as best you can, and I think creating more access points to get into school, or, you know, traveling through a neighborhood like that just isn't necessary for the amount of houses that I see at a glance in that neighborhood.
Yeah, and that said, I mean, if it turns out that over the years, that something changes, that can always be readdressed, but that's something that, at least for right now, it does make sense that that portion would be taken off and could be investigated if there was actual need for it or interest in it in the future.
How much, how much activity happens at the, at the elementary schools after hours, like playground use and things of that nature? Somebody could.
Would somebody from the, one moment, please, would somebody from the school district like to address that?
Honestly, it varies by location. Some of our schools that are, again, harder to get at, you have less activity. The ones that are in neighborhoods, yeah, the playgrounds are used by the community and by the families, and fully maintained by the school district. So it does provide another place for kids to go and run and play and enjoy beyond just the Park District or other locations, and this would be in a safe area where they would be able to be away from traffic and be able to play with, on the blacktop, as well as the different playground systems. In regards to after-school activities, again, depending on the schools, they have group activities that are student-focused, whether it's like girls on the run or 4-H, there's Girl Scout troops, different groups, and even different clubs. And then the parent activities that happen after hours, depending on the building, again, there are a lot of options out there for families to participate in at the school level after hours.
Thank you.
I have a question. So it's 33% of the students in the district elementary are in that area, and I, my understanding is if you're more than 1.25 miles away, you do not get bus service. So realistically, how many students are you looking at busing into here?
We're, that will be minimal. That will be, we're trying to be as minimal as possible. We're looking at everything from, like, birth rates of the people who live in the houses there. So to another point that someone made earlier about, you know, we don't know exactly how many people are going to attend the school in the future. We are looking at everything from who's reporting that they're pregnant right now, and that maybe our kid in five years, to looking at who is in our current cohort of kids with five kids. Who, who we know would have to take a bus are any of the students that have to cross major areas, and that would be the Annie Glidden Road. Any of those students would have to cross. But as a result, we're going to try to minimize that, but right now, we have people, let's say, you know what Echo Park is? We have young people traveling all the way to Malta, getting on the bus at seven o'clock in the morning to get all the way to Malta, because, you know, we are full. I know the question came up earlier, saying they don't believe that we are full. Well, I'll, I'll walk with you in our elementary schools at Jefferson and the other schools. We are full, we're bursting at the seams. This is something we've been knowing at least five years. So we're just trying to remedy and give our most precious commodities everything that they need.
Yeah, personally, I can't argue the need, especially after the amount of temporary classrooms we've approved over the years.
Yeah.
And then Zach, I have a question for you. So you kind of talked about this a little bit earlier, but would you, I know you can't say that there's zero risk at all, but would you say that if this was put into place with the retention plans, the homeowners in Fox Hollow are safer from a flood than they currently are now?
Absolutely, by magnitudes. Yeah, there is no control over what's going on there right now. It's a low point in the earth that the water finds, and to my knowledge, we're not currently sending it anywhere. It's, when that fills up, it starts leaking over wherever, or it's percolating and evaporating. So, again, the point that we're controlling this, and we have a controlled orifice to get it into the city network, which runs straight south over by the university, and that, this is engineered and controlled now.
Could I?
This is just, I thought on the plan was sent, is that there's a storm sewer that runs north and south from Ridge to Garden, right underneath the victory. Doesn't that storm sewer exist? Does it not work?
Yeah, it works, right. I'm saying, to my knowledge, no, there's no, there's no active measures to drain into that actively. There's no flared end section with the, you know, with the pietine right into the storm sewer.
Does that might go into the storm sewer that starts at the top of Garden Road?
The storm sewer is right here in.
It comes down from.
Utility map, it's in orange here, so it runs from here all the way through the parking lot up to Ridge, doesn't go into the trees.
Runs all the entire way down Garden Road and ejects by, behind the engineering building there in the north lording of NIU, and then ultimately to the Kishawaki River.
And if it, if it eases.
It's converted off if I see one.
Yeah. If it eases the minds of any of the folks over at Fox Hollow, I, I think this is my, the end of my third or fourth, in my fourth year now, and we've approved many, many plans that have involved detention ponds and where people that have lived in the communities or around the communities have come forward and said, we're really concerned about that. And I don't think I've heard of one case yet where someone's complained that it, you know, that they've had flooding after it's happened, that it seems to have, in fact, worked as Zach has put forward. So I do think you'll probably find that you're, you're better off with this, because there isn't anything right now working in your favor. And this is, this is proactive.
Yeah, I would agree. Of anything that we've approved under the current standards, I have not, I have not heard one complaint about retention ponds or water management.
I don't have any other questions.
Can I just say that I, I was excited to see a school go into the area. I lived in University Village for 12 years, and my kids went to various schools, Tyler, Lincoln, and Jefferson. And to have a school within walking distance, to have a school in the area, to have a place where they could go after school would have been great for them. And I just think it, it adds something to the community when you put something like a school in the middle of it for those children. So I was excited about it. I know that when I, when I hear, you know, the residents, and I try to, you know, write down the concerns of the residents and see if they're addressed, I know that some people want, you know, may not want a school in their area, but I think that for the, for the area itself as a whole, I do believe that it's going to be a benefit. I mean, with regards to the flooding and the water and all that, but for the activity of the kids, for the involvement of the parents, you know, we're trying, you know, work to get parents more involved in their kids' education, and if they can walk to the school, if all those things can happen, I just think it's a benefit to DeKalb as a whole, so.
Agreed. As a kid that grew up at Spruce Hill as a little kid and walked to Tyler, I can agree with that 100%.
I walked seven miles uphill both ways.
And look what it did to you.
That's why you're like you are.
I do think that if any motion is made between, I do think it should exclude the path.
Agreed.
I agree.
Excludes the what?
The path. The path going to.
The path of the Fox Hollow.
Fox Hollow.
Okay.
Was there anything more about the traffic and the safety around the area?
Zach, there'll be, obviously, there'll be traffic studies, I assume, just based on what is currently there.
Commander Lekas wanted to respond.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer about traffic. I mean, obviously, there is traffic issues at all the schools. I think your parents mentioned kids getting picked up and things like that. I think part of that problem, and I think Mr. Wright mentioned the busing, or we talked about different busing and things like that, not having as much busing will actually reduce some of the traffic, because one of the concerns that we get right now is a lot of people are pulling up waiting at the bus stops in that neighborhood, because there's a lot of bus stops, and we don't have to, we don't have to worry about that anymore potentially. The other thing that we have is staggered times. The high school does not let out at the same time as the elementary schools. There's an hour difference there, so you don't have all that traffic at once. You also have to factor in, there'll be crossing guards. I currently oversee our schools and our school resource officers. I work with the crossing guards every day to make sure that they notify us of any problems that are existing. There are currently no crossing guards up in that area except for on Ridge at Jefferson, so having the extra crossing guards, I think, would actually help with traffic. Finally, the, having a school in the community, in our opinion, would actually help crime. It would reduce crime, because it is something that's a deterrent. Right now, that, and if you guys don't know, the city has already invested quite a bit in that area. There's already been, now, obviously, any crime is unacceptable, any amount of crime is unacceptable. But you all know that those apartments have changed ownership, it's improved already. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball. We don't know, you know, crime is very unpredictable. Well, those are, those are happening on the other side of Annie Glidden right now. However, again, I'm not minimizing any amount as horrible. We don't want anything, but we've added the public safety cameras there, there's license plate readers, so any amount of that crime is going to be already addressed, but having a school is also going to make it a deterrent, in our opinion, in many ways, because a lot of the times that we see, we have a lot of schools all over town, you're not seeing a lot of those things happen after hours. It's highly patrolled, officers are in there, they see it, anything stands out like a sore thumb if somebody's in the school or in the parking lot or anything like that. It gives officers a reason to address that. We proactively interdict things like that, so it doesn't become an issue. I know you mentioned NIU was patrolling before, now that the building's, it's not really being patrolled, we do that. We still keep officers in that area all the time, because, you know, as we mentioned, that's a big concern for us. So, you know, we do have a lot of these things already addressed. I mean, the, the parking issues have been addressed already with some of the parking signs in the neighborhoods. We don't anticipate that it'll get any worse than it was when the nursing school was there, because we had a lot of NIU students that were parking in different areas. That was the reason they ended up putting up a lot of those parking signs that made it resident only. Sunflower was one of them. I believe the same thing with Fox Hollow. So we are already having that, so those ordinances are already in place. If there was an issue with some of those traffic flows or parking, we would address that right away, too.
Do you have any other traffic? We didn't really all talk about Garden, because I think based on the plan, maybe Tammy can say, like, people are going to come in on Normal and then they'll leave off of Garden, and, you know, Garden, you know, Garden and Hillcrest, the students are also coming off of that, too, right? That intersection, so how are you guys going to manage that? Because then, for example, if I wanted to leave my house between 8:00 and 8:30 or 3:30, I pretty much can't go anywhere without being, maybe not even get out of, like, Major Street. I won't be able to, like, turn right or left, probably off Garden, consume so much, or by Street Hillcrest, I might not be able to really go east or, you know, north or whatever. Right or left out of it, there's going to be traffic coming out of those areas, and I'm not going to be able to go down to Ridge either, because there's going to be all that traffic in the schools.
Well, I'll say, as far as, I mean, I, we monitor those areas every day, even for traffic. I mean, the statistics, statistics that don't support that the accidents aren't really happening, we don't, that's not one of our high accident areas. There's a lot of stop signs already. I'd let Zach answer as far as the engineering. Correct, not at Garden and Hillcrest, but right now, we wouldn't have the school coming out to there at this point. And there is, there is stop signs on Garden, so people would have to stop on Garden. I'm just saying that right now, that the parking lot doesn't come out to Garden at this point, so it's not an existing.
Does the traffic flow from going to Garden into that?
I'm just saying, right now, it's not an issue why we wouldn't have a stop sign. Yeah, right. So, so that might be something that engineering would look at down the road. I can't answer that. I'm just saying, right now, statistics don't show that there's a lot of accidents, even in that area. There's, we've had some speeding issues, we do a lot of patrol enforcement, but again, all those things, like the crossing guard on Ridge, I sit there all the time, and there's nobody speeding on that road when school's out, probably because there's cars, there's a lot of traffic. But people actually do pay attention more around those schools. Some of these traffic issues, I think, would be alleviated by more walking. I mean, that's just one of the things that we do notice.
To that point, and correct me if I'm wrong, how many, what percentage of kids would be within, I don't know, that, that potential area? Because again, I don't think you're going to see as much car traffic, because you do have so many kids walking to school, or being escorted.
Except everyone over on the other side of Annie Glidden, they're not going to walk.
Correct. No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, in comparison to a lot of the other schools around here, the distance for those kids to walk is fairly short for the concentration that's there, so.
I think we've got the information about where it can be given to us, right?
Right. Out there.
So, so, because there are over 1,300 students, there's no way we can fit 1,300 students in that building. But remember, we still have Jefferson, and we would still be having some of the, some of those students, particularly those on the other side of Annie Glidden, that's not in special programming, more than likely to continue to attend Brooks. So they would probably still get bused if they're on the other side, but we're going to, again, we're working with our demographer to see exactly who will be attending that building, but it's no way that we can fit in any, at most people. So our first come, besides special program, will be students that can walk, so the majority of the building. And right now, I'm not going to throw out a number, but it's going to be a great deal of the students that will be walking there.
Zach Gill wanted to address some of the traffic comments.
I'm sorry?
Zach Gill wanted to address some of the traffic comments.
Zach?
Oh, sure. So when we looked at that, a couple aspects to it, the normal road thing, if you look, I don't know if it was, can you go to the, Dan, to that, the sight plane maybe shows that parking lot? I don't know if people were really able to focus on that. That's a, quite a substantial kind of switchback through there. And so with some of the schools, particularly when you talk about Ridge, you're essentially talking about the drop-off, parents are using the city facility as their, what we call queuing, right? The stack up, you know, and all the other wild stuff that goes on at those. We've now got them quite substantial area to queue up on school property and at least mitigate that negative impact to those non-school users that just want to drive up into our normal road. The other aspect, when we looked at Normal, the reason why they're not allowed to go out on Normal is because that would make it really hairy to have that many conflicting movements, right? We always look at conflict and talk about movement. You've got kids running across the street, you've got someone going left, because they want to go to wherever, and the other person's trying to come in with their kid from wherever. We eliminate those contact points. It's a little bit more of a well-oiled machine than just a thoughtless, here's your entrance, in and out, get after it, folks. So we, we put some forethought to it that way. And additionally, the reason why the exit is on Garden, I think the school actually wanted to come in on Garden, just because of the way the cars line up with their building, that was a non-starter with me, because it's that pre-drop-off period, right? That's the, hey, I'm getting there 15 minutes early, I am hanging out in front of your driveway. But we purposefully did it so that, once you drop your kid off, right, you're gas and go, right? You're ready to get out of there. You're not coming there early, jockeying in position in line, so that we kind of wanted to have the less negative externality for the Garden folks when there was a choice between pre-drop-off and post-drop-off. So there has been some thought into it that way. Like I said, I'm sure it's not going to be everybody's favorite time of the day, but it usually isn't at any of them, so, yeah.
It is amazing, when it works, how efficient it can be. Cortland's a really good example of that. If you, if you ever have an opportunity, the way that they've got the buses on one side of the building and then to drive around for the parents, they empty that school in about seven minutes. It really, really works well. So hopefully, this will be as effective as Cortland is.
Yeah, I don't know offhand what's, Jeff, do you know what the length of, just that length, east to west?
I can't get that number right now.
But even if you're talking one track of it, a second track of it back, and then[1783.62] But even if you're talking one track of it, a second track of it back, and then a double track going through. So whatever that length is, I don't know if it's mentioned on there now. You take that times four, divide it by twenty, that's the length of a car. And you can do the math on how many can you really host. You mean, one run is twelve hundred feet? Oh, okay. So twelve hundred total feet, yeah, of queuing, so.
I just wanted to say about Normal traffic. I live on Dorkin Lane, nobody knows where that is. But we, our only ingress and egress is college terrace.
I'm sorry, you're a little hard to hear. Would you mind stepping forward, please? Thank you.
Kristy Krupp, eight-one-eight, Dorkin Lane. So my only way to get anywhere is to head onto Normal Road. Kind of, I am just south of the Episcopalian Church. We don't have a back exit out of our subdivision. College terrace is our only way out. I have noticed a difference in the Normal heaviness of traffic since the pylons have gone up at Lucinda, closing off Normal from Lucinda to thirty-eight. Nobody's talked about NIU traffic. We've got, Normal is a heavy NIU traffic area, both walking. We've got college students walking at all hours of the day and night. And we also have college students driving. So it's not just staggered high school and elementary school. And I agree, I think having a neighborhood school for this area would be great. But Normal Road is very, very busy. Are you going to have another, are you going to have a stoplight then at Normal and Ridge? Because that is going to be insane. It's going to be way busier than First Street and Hillcrest. And they have a stoplight there for kids walking to Clinton Rosette. Are you going to have a stop sign then at Garden and Hillcrest? So you have stop signs within two blocks of each other? And then, I'm just throwing out, the traffic on Normal has gotten worse since that closing of, or what's going to be a turnaround. I think especially with kids walking, this is kind of a disaster waiting to happen.
Thank you.
Pedestrian safety was taken into account for the children as part of what's, there will be a slight redesign to Normal Road. And that was obviously the paramount consideration is the safety of the children through different protected pedestrian islands, traffic calming measures, things of that nature, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I would think that the islands would actually slow that traffic, you know, a fair amount as well.
Yeah, I mean, there might be, you know, a double-edged sword there. But when we, when we really restrict and control that, we're not giving people the option to act in bad faith of, oh, I'm just going to pull over real quick on Normal, you know what I mean? You jump out here, Johnny, you know, type of thing. We basically, we've put them in the machine. You've got one lane, you're going down it, you turn left to go into the school. You don't get the choose-your-own-adventure thing because, I've got a couple of extra feet here. I'll just pull over and, you know, and hold up everyone else. So hopefully, nature takes its course there with the drivers, so.
I have a question. Around the perimeter and with respect to some of the neighboring houses, I assume, because I haven't seen it in here, is there a fence that's being proposed? And I also ask that only in terms of keeping track of children as well.
Fencing and landscaping for privacy purposes.
Understood. Thank you.
In regards to the fence, currently, the property owners on the east side, Fox Hollow, each of those property owners does have a fence that connect to each other. So at this point, we were not looking to put specifically a fence on that side. In regards to the south side, it's very overgrown to the point that it's even difficult at this point to see where the property line is in regards to what it's going to look like once we clear off that area. It's, and that's on the NIU property area. That has just kind of become overgrown in the backyards of the properties off of Normal. I'm sorry, Kimberly? Kimberly, thank you. So we are, we do know we have to take a look at that once we start to clear that and then make a determination if a fence is needed along that. And it's been discussed at a district level. And if a fence is needed to separate the south side land from the property owners on the south side, then we will be looking to do that. And even talked about getting some feedback from property owners in regards to what type of fence we're looking at at that point if that decision is made. In regards to landscaping.
I had to say, we were wanting to put on a note, we're the only fence on the east side, which is some tall, unclimbable, we have a short section of fence. So we were actually asking you guys to, like, anything that you were going to be able to.
I would say that we're looking at, for the, for the east side, to be looking to add back in trees and other landscaping. That would create that privacy level and more of a dividing line, as well as then increase the landscaping that we're, the trees that we do have to take out to accommodate the bus drop-off. It is something that I know was talked about in community conversations a couple of weeks ago at the NIU building that was held. And we do plan to have participation. And we would like feedback from the neighbors and the interested parties in regards to what does that look like? So that is something that we can have involvement from our neighborhood in regards to what that landscaping could look like and what size of the trees, what type, what type of plants. There was a lot of comments in regards to the appropriate type of plants in regards to proper drainage and water basin and that. Which I am far from an expert on that, so I'm not going to even try to speak on that. We would want to bring in those people that could help us make those recommendations.
Thank you.
What kind of areas would be put up while the construction is going on?
We have already had conversations with our construction management crew, Lamp Incorporated, and they are aware that they will be putting up a construction fence and there will be security involved during construction. It is something that they, they have done, construction management, at a number of school districts all over the state. And that is just part of their process.
To the point, isn't there, I'm guessing there's some type of ordinance where large-scale construction has to be fenced off in a populated area like that anyway?
Yeah.
Some of that takes care of itself and that the contractor themselves has to carry liability insurance. And their rates go down very favorably for them if they properly do a little bit upfront, so.
They don't want anybody in there either. Any other comments from the commission? With the noted amendment about the path, I would ask for a motion to approve then.
Yeah, if you, I've heard a few about the path being removed, so you can include that. Should be included if you want to do that in the sample motion of removing the path on the overall site plan. If that's what you're going to do.
That's, I think we're all in agreement on that, correct?
I'll make the motion. Based upon the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend the City Council approval of a special youth permit for an elementary school at twelve forty Normal Road per the overall layout plan excluding the path to Fox Hollow, dated nine fourteen twenty-three, labeled as Exhibit A, and per the conditions listed in Exhibit B.
So moved by Stoker, may I have a second?
Second.
Second to my right. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you bring him?
No.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for participating.
Take five.
Yeah, we can take a five-minute recess before the next hearing.
I didn't know whether. There are concerns, and they should be addressed at the council level, right? This next one should only take about three minutes. My bladder's begging on that.
Oh, for sure, for sure. So there's a good-sized park center, what it is. But that physical size, that was four or five blocks. It's true. And her kids, their elementary school is three blocks away. And when Trish and Dan moved down there, George was in first grade. And Penny wasn't in school yet. She was four, she was in preschool. And Trish is a early childhood teacher. And so, you know, she'll let George go off to school. She goes, you know, the first couple of weeks, I'll walk him. But he's old enough, he can do it. And the rest of the neighbors, I shouldn't be saying. I mean, he didn't even have to cross the other side of the street, like, same street. I got a third grader, and I don't think I'd let him walk. No, I never lived close enough. We always had a state highway that you would have to cross. So it'd be like crossing Fourth Street to get to my school. High school, I was a block away. Oh, I can't believe we're not done. Well, I got, like, way lucky. Usually I have a babysitter. And, you know, I tell them I'll be there within an hour, maybe it's like a half hour. But my husband called in sick today, so I'm like, you're watching the kids. I'm like, boy, this was a good day for that because babysitter probably.
Well, and what drives me nuts is I, again, I don't understand how a state entity can sell a property to... Yeah. Oh, no, I have to go.
I read that. That's what I'm saying, just watch. Watch your taxes. It just, no, they just moved out about, I don't know, last summer. Because I live down. One of the, one of my, one of the kids who worked for me, her boyfriend just finished the nursing.
Can we reconvene in a moment? Okay, we will move on to the second item on our agenda.
I need two people.
He should be in very shortly.
Go get him, Dan.
Paging Mr. Wright, Mr. Becker, Mr. Wright. Paging Mr. Becker, Mr. Wright, Mr. Becker. Check, check.
Anybody know the score of the football game?
Oh, is it tonight in New Orleans, is it?
Tonight's New Orleans, yeah. Pittsburgh and Cleveland and New Orleans.
With those shoes, well, I had to wear my older brother's shoes.
Okay, again, we will reconvene. And the second item, a public hearing, a petition by DeKalb County Community Gardens for approval of the rezoning from the LC Light Commercial District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District for an eight-acre site located along the east side of North Annie Glidden Road, South of Twanley Road, and North of Ridge Drive. The proposed facility will include a community health, education, and food center, community building, greenhouses, and accessory uses. Is there someone here to present? Good evening.
Thanks for your patience, and I'll make an effort to be brief.
Could you say your name, please?
But we're certainly willing to talk about everything. My name is Mark Strauss. I'm attorney with the Foster Buick Firm at two oh four oh Aberdeen Court in Sycamore. And I'm here on behalf of DeKalb County Community Gardens. There's been an extensive discussion in the community about the location of this facility. Also, a report that we've taken a look at, which accurately summarizes the high points of this improvement to the community. We're in full support of the recommendations that are contained in the staff report, and we're willing to abide by the exceptions that were indicated, the conditions to the approval. This evening with me, I also have David Castro, who's the president of the organization, as well as Jessica Gephardt, who's the project architect, in case there are any questions. So rather than belaboring this, we're happy to respond to any of the questions that the Plan Commission may have tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Daniel, you have a staffer?
Yes. So the Community Gardens is requesting a rezoning of a site. It's about eight acres. You can see it there, east side of Annie Glidden Road. Currently in the city, Zone Light Commercial District, used for egg for decades. Seems like a good site for them. They want to rezone the site to Plan Development Commercial to accommodate a couple waivers to the UDO. And also gives a chance for the city to review the plans and the elevations which they submitted. So it's a preliminary development plan also. And they have submitted a plan. Staff's reviewed. There was a few minor changes, and they submitted a revised plan back. Two access points off of Annie Glidden Road around the site. This is their main building. They call the Community Health and Education Food Center. Have a community building, have greenhouses and other accessory uses. The staff report explains in their packet, very thorough explanation by the applicant of all the benefits of the project and all the uses they plan to do. The chef's center would be about thirty-six thousand feet. The community building, eleven thousand square feet, three greenhouses, and a garden center. And many other uses there. The applicant hopes to be operational by the end of twenty twenty-five, he indicates in the summary. There's a total of one hundred and eighteen parking spaces, and the choir number's at ninety-two, so they do have adequate parking. There is a walking path proposed to the south. Go back to the arrow. Shows it better. They want to get some type of pedestrian access to Ridge Drive. There'd be a lot of people walking, needing to walk to the facility. So they're looking at a landscaped area, and it is covered by utility easement. I think it's through this area right here. And they do show it on the plan to try and connect to that. Be through a green space. They'll have to coordinate with the joining private property owner. But there's utility easements there that perhaps could be a path through there to get to Ridge. So that's important for them. So they'll be working on that as they move forward. Detention will be looked at when they get the final engineering plan. There's plenty of room to accommodate that. There are some potential wetlands on the property of the southeast portion of the site. They'll have to further investigate those and delineate them on the final development plan. Be reviewed by staff. The couple waivers, there's a fifty-foot buffer when you have Plan Development Commercial next to residential. There's multifamily to the south and east. So they do provide that, it's shown in the plan, around the south and east sides of the site. So there's only a small encroachment with a loading area behind the community building and that fifty-foot, and the path proposed within that fifty-foot, too. So both of those, we recommend approval of that. And also, the, there's a screening requirement between commercial and residential fence. But since they have the fifty-foot buffer area and on the east side, we didn't see a need for fence. It's multifamily next door. It's multifamily next door, and there's quite a distance, 100-plus feet to the, any type of roadway or facility. Same, pretty much, on the south side, multifamily here, and you have a really good setback, 50 feet. Didn't see a need really of a fence needed at that. Costly, we didn't see a need to force them to put a fence. It really won't serve a whole lot of purpose in that situation. So looking at the standards for the rezoning, they meet all the requirements. The comp plan calls for a commercial on here. They meet many of the goals and objectives of AGN Plan, which the applicant put together in their background summary very well, and meeting all the other requirements for a rezoning, we believe. So, public comments, we did receive emails, which you have copies from residents Merrill Greer, Domenia, and Lynn Nguyen in support of the request. And since the agenda was supposed to Thursday, we received written comments from Opportunity DeKalb, NIU, and resident Cynthia DeSeef, all in favor of that project. And those copies were provided to you tonight. So we'd recommend approval. There's a sample motion that approves the plan that you see on the screen, and also Exhibit B, which lists the permitted uses, the two waivers, which I talked about. And also requires a final development plan be submitted when they get to that point. Engineering plan, landscape, lighting plan, and a traffic analysis to look at that. And that will come back, you'll see this again, come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and council.
Thank you. We have three people that asked to speak to this. Mark, you've already stepped forward unless you have something you'd like to add. Okay, David?
I will pass.
Okay. And then Jessica? Gilbert? Sure.
All right, hi, I'm Jessica Gebhardt. I'm the architect working on this project with DeKalb County Community Gardens. And I hope that with this plan, we're communicating, we're really trying to become a community hub. And things like the fence, we would be very grateful to not have to do it because we're all about bringing people in, and we want to encourage visibility and community fostering within the project. So the goal here is that we'll have a spot for farmers markets, for education, for learning about food, coming together. And then the community outbuilding, the intent for that would be potentially some early childhood education or clinic. And those partners are still a little bit unclear, so that building is a hope, but not necessarily a guarantee, at which point we could potentially look at shifting things on the site a little to move that driveline away from the planted area. We did begin looking into the wetlands, and from what our engineering company we hired has told us, there is a wetland shown on the north side of the site, but they did not find any semblance of a wetland on any other part of the site. If we do get other feedback, we can adjust accordingly. But we're trying to be very mindful of providing a lot of green space and becoming an asset in the community, so.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion by the council committee, commission, sorry.
You know, there are projects that speak to growth in a community. You look at the corridor along 88. And then there are projects that just make a community a better place to live in. And I really think this is one of them. I, as you go through and you read, you go, I mean, we're not a huge community, and to have something like this, I think, would give us a real nice sense of being able to look at other communities and go, "Hey, come to DeKalb." So, yeah, I think it's great, I think it's fantastic. I look forward to seeing it as it gets piped up.
I'd try to rephrase it, but I'm just going to say, "Yay."
Ditto.
I agree with him, I think this is a wonderful project for the community at large, so. And if there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the rezoning of subject site from the LC Light Commercial District to the PDC Plan Development Commercial District per the preliminary development plan dated 8/30/23 and architectural elevations dated 8/30/23, attached as Exhibit A and per the development standards in Exhibit B.
So moved by Flirty?
Second.
Second by Becker, may I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Can you grant?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. We tried.
Can I suggest that we make a motion adjourned?
Well, we have a...
Dan works all week on this.
I work on this all week for the exciting report.
What else, yeah, I need to see the preview.
Yeah, there's quickly, next meeting October 2nd, we have actually three hearings, a variance on Seaman Avenue for a shed in front of the home. Then we got a special use for classic car dealer, 215 North Fourth Street, across from Magora Tower. Used to be a bowling alley and NIU facility. Indoor, all indoor storage. But we have to do a text amendment to the Central Business District zoning to, it only permits new car sales as a special use, so we want to take out that new and modify it to allow them to apply for the special use. So have those three hearings coming up the next meeting, October 2nd. And the council did unanimously approve, at their last meeting, the golden property annexation and zoning out there at Peace and Girler Road.
Excellent, nice.
That's all, thanks.
Okay, unless anybody has anything to add, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Becker, may I have a second, please? Second to my right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, ladies.
I'm just waiting for him to object.